Well, it's 6:30. I'll call the meeting door. Any additions or deletions on the agenda?
No.
So, approval of select board minutes of August 21st. Any comments?
Don't look at me, I can't vote, so.
Um.
That's right, it's only the three of us.
Yeah.
I make a motion to accept minutes of August 21st.
Second that.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pay orders. We have pay orders for... Thirty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars and ninety-six cents. Any questions or concerns on it?
What was the addition? These ones here or the addition to this thirty-three month that was in our packet? Is that correct?
We got another good one for, um, pocket pest control. We got, um, our lifeguards, um... We got that he won, he gets reimbursed for his lifeguard training. We got that and we wanted to, we did a great job.
Yes.
One whole night up, so there's a few little additions like that.
I make a motion to accept the pay orders for the amount of thirty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars and ninety-six cents as of September 6th, 2023.
Second? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alabstein.
Okay.
Road commissioners report. Is he coming tonight?
He is coming tonight.
Let's see, is there anything here we can cover well? We typically just...
And we connect to this?
Phil did say that dry, the sand price was very good. He said, said last year eight seven ninety, so he thought eight thirty was pretty good.
Say, we could, we could actually approve that.
Okay. Are you in motion for that?
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion to accept Pike Industries aggregate quote contract of, um, twenty-four thousand, nine hundred dollars for dry screen sand.
Second? All's in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
You probably have to wait on the culvert and...
Yeah.
The other things.
Yeah, I think we may as well wait on the rest of the stuff till Phil gets here.
Oh.
Honorable mentions. We want to thank Kathy for donating her select board salary to the musical groups.
And we want to thank Bruce Duchesne for behind hearing at the transfer station to fill in.
He's getting good at that. I mean, to offer him a whole time.
Someone else hasn't been mentioning it, so.
And we want to thank Goldie Nemeth for all the work she's done around the, the bridge by Waldo Lane, mowing and flowers and such, so, that's really nice.
It looks beautiful. I took a walk yesterday and it looks really pretty.
Public comments. Folks, you want to comment, or are you here for something specific?
Thank you for asking.
Phil's come. Before you move on.
There you go.
He doesn't look like he's been working all day.
No, he's sounding good.
He's sleeping.
He's sounding better than I looked ten minutes ago. Am I on the stage already?
Yes, we are.
Well, I... We did, Phil, approve the contract for Pike for the sand.
Oh, okay.
Eight thirty a ton. I told him to set up a good price.
Yeah, that's a reasonable price for sure. This SLC, I think, is eleven. Um, I haven't heard any more about the grader. He said it was going to be delivered this week.
Yeah.
He called and told me twice on that, that's all I've heard on that.
Um, he told, uh, I think he told the garage too. They thought possibly as quick as tomorrow, but, um...
Yeah, I didn't get down today.
Yeah, I, um, I, I've added it to the insurance, so it should be there this week, but I did add it to our insurance.
Because they called me two, three times. They got somebody looking at the old grader. I don't know if they ever actually showed up or not. We also, they brought back all the stuff that went over to the welding gentleman over on 103, made up all the couplers. I don't know if you've seen any of that stuff. He did all that. I don't know if he sent a bill or not.
For the brush hog on the...
The, uh, no, the snowplow frame, the, um, broom, the forks to, from the old loader, converted over onto this loader now. Um, he had a quick attach for the plate so we can drive into the blower head. That mounts right onto the loader.
That's what I meant to say, actually, Phil, before, not the...
Yeah, and, uh, I also did talk to Kat on Thursday of last week. I was down at the shop. And they didn't send the wiring harness with that brush head. So, the salesman was going to look into that, Jeff, because that was supposed to be complete when it came.
And, uh... Like, completely have to install it, not route the wires and everything, or just like, it's like plug and play?
Basically, it's a plug-in. As far as I know, everything's just plug-in. They got to put a drink case drain back through on the boom to the tank. That's supposed to be all there.
Okay.
And stuff. So, they're, I think, working on cutting out some of the insulation in the shop. I see they're down there again today working.
Oh, good.
And stuff. I think that's what they're working on. They were there Friday. I talked to them Friday, too. They're moving some stuff around. Other than that, he's just waiting for the grader so he can start grading roads. He's done most of the prep work on Sugar Hill for building that up, other than grading in some gravel for the ramps, going up Sewer Hill and Sugar Hill. He also has got a little bit of cleanup work, I think, left over to, or if he's done any, I'm not sure, over the... Dump over on Waldo to clean that up, the shoulders and stuff. And the same with, he was going to start some of that stuff on Maple Street so that could be paved. What was the question he had for me?
See, he filled in that crack on Waldo?
Yes. Yeah. He did that. They suggested, um, Josh Carnell, he went, measured that out, went to Corps of Engineers, and they thought that a better idea than trying to re-ramp, revamp all of that river edge would be to go back to our right-of-way into the bank, if need to be, to make that safe, and put a barrier up along that edge. But I don't think it's moved much more, so.
Didn't look at.
I think.
And I haven't seen another crack in it since it, uh, since it was filled, so.
Yeah, no, it hasn't. I haven't seen it. Um, but that's something we'll have to keep a watch on.
It seems silly to take more of the trees out of that bank to let it erode further, just to build it back up.
Well, that's... When he looked at originally with me back, right just after it happened, I don't think he looked at it closely, because there's a lot of trees there, they're going to go, and a lot of root mass, and it's all going to...
Right.
It's just going to end up going back and pushing our road over anyways, because you're going to have to put in a locking channel with the wall and then come up eight or ten feet, maybe twelve feet, to the shoulder of the road, and then widen it anyways, so.
Right.
He was thinking, just maybe go use our right-of-way as what we can and clean it up a little bit and set the road back. So if it happens again, we have an alternate through that. I think they finished all the seeding and everything on all their projects.
I think so.
They borrowed my cedar. I think they finished all that.
That's for that cereal, Grant's aid, yeah.
So, that's all done. I know. I think they hauled a little sand the other day. I'm not sure.
They, uh, took all the tires up to the Rutland, too, from the transfer station.
Yeah. Yeah. But other than that, I don't know. They're just basically been finishing up the Grant's aid stuff and that, prepping for the paving, which I have heard nothing about, so I presume it's still going to be mid, late September, early October for its paid.
So they, you, you got the contract, we have the fully executed agreement to do Creek Roads.
From Maple, yeah, over the bridge, yes.
Know it here, too, that Mr. Holden would like his driveway culvert replaced, or he want?
Oh, that Steve was going up and look at that. That's, I know which one it is. Steve talked about that, hadn't he? Because he had another one that collapsed up there somewheres that he was going to do, too, at the same time.
He had Charlie go up and put some stone around it to see if that would work, but it didn't.
No, it's, he thinks it's collapsed, just like the last one. He was going to just temporarily, until he got a chance to dig it out and replace it. Because there's two or three of them that are like that, that have come to surface. They need to be replaced in different spots.
You know if he's talked to the, the gentleman to let him know what?
I have not myself. I don't know if Steve has. I know he went out, told me. I have not talked to Mr. Holden myself, no.
Because he was going to be gone for two weeks. He was helping it be done while he was gone, so he can get in and out.
Oh, but when was, when is this two-week period that he's going to?
Probably pretty soon. It's going to be up.
Maybe we have to send him up there. I don't know where the es- little excavator is. I have to see where he left that. I think it's up in sewers.
Have you looked at it? Do you think it's the culvert, culvert, that's the problem?
Yes. Yeah. I think it's an old culvert, just deteriorated.
So FEMA representative's going to be in town tomorrow at?
10:00.
Ten, ten AM.
Now, which round is this on?
This is going to be, this is going to be here. It's not going to be site visits.
Oh, just here?
Well, I think at least Steve needs to be here.
Well, I'll, I'll try to be here.
Okay, because we need, you know, the damage inventory needs to be progressed. They want to know what percentage of work is done on all these roads.
Okay.
And...
So it's like, you need latitudes and longitudes for every second segment of road damage as well?
Now, how are they going to grab that?
Not they, me.
They'll say, I don't have a GPS in my pocket.
Well, I mean, I can take the iPad out and photograph it, and the iPad will give us the latitude and longitude, but every segment. So if it's under two hundred feet, it's a new segment.
If it's two hundred feet from those pre-existing, one before?
Two hundred feet and longer, we have to do latitude, longitude at the start and at the finish. After that, if there's another segment, we have to do that one, and that one, and that one. So there could be ten or twelve segments on a single road.
Yeah.
It's not the old FEMA damage where it's just like, oh, it's Dawson Hill.
Well, that's, that's originally what it was. If, you know, they took, they said from one end of the road to the other.
Right.
Had to be X amount of dollars to get money, and that's how they based it.
That's, they're doing that with money, but they still want the latitude and longitude. They want to know the exact point of each piece of damage on the road.
Could, could we get a pretty strong estimate being, using the Google?
I mean, what I use, I use Vtrian's estimates so far.
Okay, okay.
That day Kathy and I went out with Vtrian's. They gave us rough estimates of all the roads, of some of the roads, but not all. So I put those damage estimates in here.
Okay.
We have a lot of roads we didn't visit. We didn't even visit the garage, uh, the garage I put, what VLCT said.
How many roads do we have left that we need to estimate?
Um...
We need to look at Hartsboro.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, eleven.
Wow. And that has to be done before ten tomorrow?
No, but we need to continue. He, he's going to want it before the next visit, which is a week from tomorrow, and that's when they are doing site inspections.
So that needs to kind of be a priority.
Yeah, he, he wants to see this tomorrow, what we have done.
Oh, yeah, so far.
He knows it's not done.
There's a lot more left.
There's a lot more, because I, on here, I've listed every road that has damage, but I didn't list every segment on every road that has damage. So, and I told him that today. I, he asked me how far I'd done, and I said I did what I could. But I need to ride around with somebody in the vehicle and go to every segment. And I don't know where every segment is, so it's going to have to be either Charlie or Phil, or Steve.
I'm kind of confused, because if it doesn't fall under their quote-unquote thirty-eight hundred dollars, they're not going to do anything.
Then we can just take those off.
So why do we have, there's a lot of those. We don't even have to go to them.
Well, we can eliminate them. We can maybe eliminate them tomorrow.
Okay.
But like, we know Dawson Hill has a lot of spots, Waldo Lane has a lot of spots, Sugar Hill has spots.
No, Waldo doesn't. Sure, West Hill didn't. Sugar Hill's got a bunch, but Hartsboro doesn't have enough to accumulate that. You know, we're only talking three or four load we put in there total. I don't know how they, you know, are going to figure on segments together, because that's not what they originally started.
Well, I mean, if we did like, hopefully Carrera Camp Blackwood, and maybe they would bump some of those together.
Well, yeah, those each had more than enough damage.
So, I mean, I'll need segments on both.
So basically, what we need are the segments that we've done, the ones that actually have dollar amounts proposed to them by the state.
And then to eliminate the ones that don't, right?
Correct, because those, those aren't going to make it anyways.
There's a app you can put on your phone. It's my GPS coordinates.
Yeah.
And all I do is take a snapshot of my screen, and it's accurate within about fifteen feet, and it's really good.
I do, I do that on the iPad.
Okay.
When I take photographs on the iPad.
Yeah, the photograph, right.
It shows you where the coordinates are.
Okay.
But the damage one is like, Phil took, and Charlie and Steve, those, those are not on iPhones.
Right, oh.
I don't have coordinates on those.
Right, okay.
That's the other thing, is I, I need the damage. I need before pictures of...
The before pictures.
I know. I need the before pictures of Blackwood and Carrera and Centerville.
And it's hard to send them to a town computer. Because they don't like...
Somehow we got to get them transferred, even if it's like, putting them on a...
A little micro?
A little, yeah. And then being able to, yeah, like a USB?
Yeah, USB card.
Yeah.
Are you, just because you can't, you don't have email on, on those phones or something, or just?
No, we've tried it. It won't, we can't send anything to them unless we do individual, I think it is, through, uh, you know, my email, one at a time. And then you've got to decipher out.
But still, it shouldn't...
I know, that's what we thought. We tried it.
Have you just tried just texting it, like Sandy to you, and then you try to send it?
Yeah.
Or even send it, even send it to me and a...
Send it to you, and you have to download them all.
What type of phones do they have?
Wow.
They took pictures of.
It's not an iPhone. It's, it's the other one.
The other one!
It's a good one.
You can always make a photo gallery. You can make a...
That's true.
You can make a photo album in Google Picks.
Yeah.
Save them in there, and then send that link.
Exactly.
In the email.
Wife will have to do that. I can't.
So, yes, use a photo now, make a photo gallery of the before pictures on Google Photos, and then you'll be able to send them that way.
All right, well, we'll try that. Just, yeah, me.
I can help you later.
Yes.
That's who I sent them.
Bring your phone, bring your phone to Justin or Caroline.
Yeah.
Ready to move on?
Other than that, I don't have anything else.
She still has the coordinates.
Um, Terry might be here for road business, are you?
Oh, of course.
Are you here for a road, you're here for a road concern, right?
Uh, not really. I mean, uh, ditch, what do you call it?
This will be the time to talk to Phil about it.
Uh, next to my house, you know, where that... Initially, thirty-three years ago, the state would ditch this thing. And then they decided they didn't want to do it, and the town did it, and I've had it done a couple times. Jay West did it once, I think he did it once.
Yeah, and now you're talking up your side street?
No, just on the, right next to my front door on the house there.
Oh, on Route Seven?
No, I mean, way back toward my house. You know where my front door is on my house?
Yeah.
That little pond thing?
Yeah, where the ditch is, runs underneath.
That ditch right there, that's all, that's all I'm talking about. It's a small affair. It's not that big a deal, but it needs to be done.
That drains all, runs all the way down to Route Seven underground.
There's a culvert that goes...
Across Seven?
Yeah, I mean, fifty, sixty feet underneath Seven. And I thought it was a purview of the state because it was...
And they're right over it.
But apparently the state doesn't want to do it. I don't know who to turn to anymore. I mean, I...
I'll, I'll look into that.
I just haven't, I mean, it's just too much for me to keep doing. Sure. Uh, it's just, I mean, year after year, because I did thirty-three years.
Yeah, I'll look into it. Terry.
Oh, probably.
And I'll look at, yeah. I'll look into it, and I'll talk to the state on it, too.
I could have just called you, but I didn't. All right, so we're good?
Yeah.
I'll look into it. Take care.
Thanks, Terry.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So we're on to the, the, um, the, um, buyout program.
I'm, I'm sorry, but, I mean, one of the reasons I brought this up is because FEMA came by, and they, I talked to them about it. They asked if I had any damage. I said, no, no. So I asked them about it, and they said they're kind of after the facts, but they did say that there are federal or state funds for this purpose. I mean, I forgot to mention that, but that's one of the things they said, so, I mean, I don't know what's available, but apparently it's, I mean, now, our fruition is hurt. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you, Terry.
Thanks, Terry.
Really, really, this time.
So we have two these laws for homeowners that are interested in this flood buyout program.
I think we have the Youngs here and the Hunters here, the two, two families that are interested in the buyout program.
So Sandy had given us literature with... Do folks think about this? Do you guys care to speak to this first, or?
Well, my property is East Lawn, it's on 103, it's at fourteen fifty-one, Route 103. Mailing address is Cunninghamville, but the property is in East Lawn. When Irene came through, she managed to cut some of the property and produce an, an island. When this last flood came through, because of the, the path of least resistance, it just went straight on through to the property, and it added or took about another fifty yards of the property and washed it all down to my neighbors, so. And I talked to FEMA, and because there was no structural damage, they can't do anything for me. She did give me a phone number for somebody in Rutland that was supposedly going to help. I called them, left my name and number and whatever. They never called me back, and my wife happened to see this article in the Times of Shrewsbury, and thus, here I am. I, on the thirty-first, the last day, I came down and talked to this young lady and made sure that my name was on the, on the list so that would somebody would at least come out and talk to me about it, so.
We had put our property up for sale the day before.
So, I don't, I don't know what the, uh, the process is going to be now, whether you have to send me paperwork that I make out, or a questionnaire that I make out, blah, 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 whatever, or if somebody's just going to come out and, you know, assess the property, and we'll go from there.
And you've been, and the, the buyout folks have been in touch with you, right?
Yeah.
They have been in touch with you?
Well, and what you've sent us.
Yeah, they bought the, I don't know if you remember, the Evening Song farm?
Oh, the one that?
Yeah, the one that...
The one that completely flooded and why they...
On Irene, yeah.
Oh.
Oh, boy.
Hey, and the town sold the neighboring property, right?
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, well, for different reasons.
And, um, it is kind of historical because...
Robert Frost.
That the backside of our house was built for him, okay?
When he would come to Vermont on vacation, whatever, he'd stay there, and he had his own room and entrance in and out of the house, so he could come and go pretty much as he, as he pleased. I don't have any kind of documentation on that. This is just what we got from a previous owner.
And two older ladies one day stopped and talked to him, and spat a few hours, because they were in town and everything about it.
Yeah, she used to own the house, and she wanted to know if, if she could take a tour through it and see how much it changed over the years. I let her go through, and she came, go, run down the hole.
Yeah, so it's pretty interesting about...
You realize that the house will be demolished if you go through this program?
If you people buy it, you can do what you want with it.
Okay.
We can't do what we want with it. The state has...
Well, whoever.
It has to be demolished.
If they want, I'll donate it to the fire department and light it on fire and let them practice their fire...
Tomorrow.
Business.
Hi, I'm Craig Hunter, and this is my wife Gretchen, and my son Ben. Uh, we purchased, Gretchen and I purchased thirty-three Weston Road in August 2017. It's at the corner intersection of Route 140 and 155. And, and it was, hadn't been lived in in a long time, and, and needed a lot of work, but we were looking for someplace for Ben and his family to rent from us until they could afford to buy it from us. So we spent the next four months basically gutting the entire house. We did insulation, electric, plumbing, heating, siding, windows, roof, mechanical, eee, goes on. We put a lot, a lot of time, uh, a lot of sweat on all of our parts and a lot of money into the house. And they were able to move in at the end of 2017, and we've sort of continually been working on it ever since. It's a sort of old house, never-ending project kind of thing. Um, and then in 2019, I think in July, we got hit with a flood, um, that basically engulfed the house, filled the basement to the, to the floor joints. And, uh, at the time, we were, we were lucky. We had flood insurance, um, besides the five thousand dollar deductible that covered our losses, which were all mechanical equipment and water treatment equipment, that kind of thing. So after that, we thought we were smart enough, and we moved everything up onto the first floor, so if it happened again, we'd create so much damage. We also did significant, um, grading work around the house. We brought in Phil and raised the level around the house against the foundation up to two feet in some areas just to create more negative drainage away from the house. And things were going well, and we were doing more, Ben was doing more work to the house, and then July, this past July happened, and it was worse than we had seen it prior. And this time, again, it was actually on the news. There was video of the house on the news, with the river just completely engulfed the house on all sides. This time, the water got up to the first floor, and so damaged flooring that needed to be replaced. Unfortunately, after the last incident, um, my insu, my flood insurance company refused to renew me, and we knew any, and new policy was going to cost like twelve, twelve thousand dollars a year, which we couldn't afford. So we, we didn't have the flood insurance, and because we're technically renting it to Ben, it's a second home for us, uh, for, second home for us, and... to Ben, it's a second home for us, uh, for, second home for us and so FEMA wouldn't cover us for anything because it's, it's our second home. Um, I think Ben was able to get a little bit of assistance as a renter, but, um, and so, um, although we hate to think about all of our work and drains and everything else about this property, um, go down in drains, it just, these hundred-year floods are coming every five years and they just seem to be getting worse and worse and worse. And, uh, so we're asking for the town's support in any way that they can, um, help assist us in the process with the mortgage. And we have applied on their website on August twenty-first, I haven't heard back from them, but we have applied to be part of the program, um, and we'd like to move forward with the process.
Can I speak to that point?
Sure. I'm the neighbor. I have been there since nineteen seventy-one, the flood of seventy-three, seventy-six, you know, on and on. And the problem is, the Bowlsville Brook assumes a whole different routing when there's flooding. And it turns right at the edge of my driveway head-on into the Hunter's property. So, they get the full force of that river. And this time, the water was not quite as high as Irene, but I, I always stayed because I live on the second floor, so I stayed and watched. Um, and what I was really stunned at was the force of the water this time. Um, and how mean it was, really. Um, and again, you know, all of these floods from, through the seventies did a lot of damage. But, and as, as Craig said, the fact that they're becoming so frequent. And my property, for whatever reason, is a little bit protected because the river moves, it turns. And the only thing, and this time, we were very lucky, all of us were lucky, in that the Mill River did not overflow. Because of the fact that it had, on Route one fifty-five, you know, where the sewers places, they, it had done when it did it here property, it took out a whole lot of land and, with Irene. So, it had all that room. So, it was not as angry when it got down to our place. I didn't remember a time, uh, that that had not overflowed into one fifty-five. And, uh, I, you know, it's, uh, there are pictures all over the place and all of that. But the Dubois garage was always full, there was always a lot of damage. The last time Mrs. Du, Art Sword brought Mrs. Dubois out, it was great difficulty because she was in a wheelchair and she couldn't come home for months. So, it's all been a very difficult situation and I just would like to support it because I think it's a, I just can't imagine, particularly with three children, wanting to be there for the next one.
Yeah, we were lucky.
They got out in time.
Uh, yeah, man.
Yeah, it was, it was a scary moment, watching the news and, and hearing that people were being evacuated by boats and being in touch with him and him just being able to physically get his family off the property, onto a road to get to us in Tolton. And, um, yeah, it's a scary, it's a scary situation.
Our back property, where it fell off into the river, is still not structurally sound. You can't go out there because there's a fear that you'll drop into the river.
Parts of it are still undermined to have it...
Oh, yes.
...fallen down yet, so. And we have a fairly heavy dog that likes to run the backyard and, uh, it scares me every time he goes up there because I'm afraid that he's going to step on that and be down in the river.
Yeah.
And I gotta go get him.
What are people's thoughts on this?
So, the, really, the only thing, looking at everything, the only thing that the town would have to do is maintain it as a green space. And we just have to approve that this is something going on, is it, am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, it comes off the green, off the grand list. The two properties will be eliminated from the grand list.
So, okay, so, okay.
Yeah.
Ultimately, yeah, there's a lot of work involved for Sandy.
We do appreciate Sandy. She was so well informed.
I mean, it's a long process, so it's not going to happen overnight, maybe eighteen months.
It could be up to a year and a half, so.
Yep.
Phil, the property on the corner of one forty and one fifty-five and just, what will that do for the, if that, if that house is gone?
If that becomes green space.
Where would the water go?
Across one fifty-five like it did this time, it's not...
So, that won't, it won't change?
Won't change it, no.
Okay, alright, that, that was where I was going, I was just curious.
It just wouldn't carry all the fencing and the toys and the pool and everything there with it?
Everything else with it?
Yeah.
So, it would go onto that land?
Yeah.
And the land would absorb some of that water?
I would think so, yeah.
Probably.
Shortly after the flood, V-Trans stopped at my house and they asked if they could view the property and so on and so forth because of the further down the river flooding. So, I let them come on the property, they walked it, they did what they wanted to do, they put their drone up in the air and they took all kinds of aerial photos somewhere out there and never, neverland they are. But I got the impression that they were interested in forcing the river back to its original flow plan before Irene. Because if they can do that, the river has to take a turn, which is going to slow down the water, less damage to property damage and also less possibility of flooding further down into Cuttingville and below. So, that was the impression that I got from them. Uh, they were going to send me, or send my wife, the aerial photos, but as yet, we have not received.
The question for us is, do we want to approve this?
Yeah.
I support this.
I mean, I think it goes to the, because we, the, last year when we approved the, the FEMA flood plane kind of guidance, it kind of reinforces that idea that this is something that, that we should be doing. Just because we're in, we're in a, we're in an okay space, but we could be in a worse space in terms of flooding.
And other towns that have, um, like, become part of this program have seen their flooding reduced from this last flood.
Yes.
I think my only concern is with the amount of, is the paperwork involved with it? I think it's a great idea, I think we should do it, but a lot of it falls on Sandy and right now, we're dead in the middle of working with FEMA also. So, the more that you can help, you folks can help with the paperwork, probably the easier it will be on Sandy, so.
Send me paperwork, I'll make it out.
I just, that'd be, that's my only concern is amount of paperwork we got going right now with FEMA.
Yeah, if there's anything that we can do to help you, it just gotta reach out.
Yeah, absolutely, anything that we can do, research, whatever, yeah.
I'm not too computer savvy, but I'll certainly try.
Yeah, you don't ask me.
Are you good with the sand?
Yeah.
Um, so I'll make a motion that we, um, move forward with the application process for these two properties.
Awesome.
Yeah, no, it's fine, for this, uh, for this, uh, buyout program.
Is that good?
Nope, sorry.
It's okay.
Alright.
Thank you very much.
I drive both, buy both of your houses all the time and the work that both of you have done, I, I just want to say, so, I appreciate what you, what you tried.
You dealt with everyone.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sorry for what you've lost and I'm glad we threw some sort of...
Hopefully there's some sort of resolution.
The most important part is still here, it's in our grant.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, we really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, town hall bids on insulation.
Thank you.
Yes, renovation. Ken Welch should ask if we can put this off until the next meeting. I don't know how everybody feels about that.
Want to put this off?
He would also be here, be part of the discussion on it.
You know that? Is this twenty seconds?
Sure, yeah, Ken, Ken mentioned that. He did say, if you wanted to go ahead with it, that's your decision, but there are some variables in the proposals that the contractors have come back with that, uh, Ken can speak to the advisability of them in a way that I cannot. Uh, you know, I can say from a layman's point, but I'm, he's a pro, and he's done this stuff, so. It has to do with whether you choose to insulate, how to insulate the area by the electrical panels and some of, some of those things, where there are some choices to be made. Uh, the one point that Ken did say is that the bids are from two contractors that he respects a great deal.
Yeah, totally.
And that he feels that these people, whatever they proposed, is going to be a quality job and they're not going to need somebody riding bird on them, uh, to make sure it gets done.
Thank you.
So, uh, but if you're going to put it off to the next meeting?
What's the consensus with everyone? Table it till the next meeting, or?
Yeah, as soon or later, we've got to move on, make a decision and, they're saying, not kick the can down the road anymore.
No, no later than the next meeting.
Right. And it's like, if he, if there's something that he can't have, can't come to that meeting, even if he could just write out what this, what those salient points are?
He's, he's talked to me about them and I have a bullet list in my head, but I would much rather have him speak to this.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want to like third or second hand, just because...
Right.
Yeah, but I, I feel like if we had some...
It's not rocket science, but he's better at talking to that than me.
Do you want me to send him the bits before that, so we can put them on the laptop?
If he has, oh, yeah, yeah, especially if you haven't seen them yet.
Ralph is here if you have questions about the engineering.
Yeah, that's, that's...
Our next item, so. So, engineering estimates for the town hall?
Yeah, we're going to table the painting, too. We're going to table that as well.
We're discussing that, I guess, yeah.
I don't have any hands.
The biggest issue I have with this is that this guy has no insurance.
Which, which, which guy?
It's painting, it's not...
Oh, contractor?
Yeah.
Oh, it's on. I don't feel we can hire this guy with no insurance.
No, especially, uh, because he's not, he's doing something that is physically demanding and...
He's going to need a man lift and...
Right.
So, do you want me to check with the, the NCT about the temporary employee? Is, and we talked about that, what was your thought?
I really don't think we want to do that, Sandy, I mean, if we take him on as a temporary employee, we've got to show that he's had training on fall protection and use of a man lift and all those safety procedures and we're not equipped for that.
We're going to have to push a few line up here.
If he ever got hurt, he'd be in a world of trouble with motion.
Yeah.
I don't think...
This is the same person who painted down the block?
Yeah.
Okay. Did a beautiful job down there.
I mean, he's done a nice job there, but he... The other thing is maybe the man could get...
Oh!
Insurance for this.
That's the other part that you mentioned, is if you could check into insurance and add maybe to the...
I mean, if he needs to increase his price a little bit...
Yeah.
To cover that.
To cover the insurance, I think we could deal with that.
Okay.
Without, without insurance.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
If we can hire him.
No.
So, maybe we can, uh, table this one until I contact him and ask him to get a price for insurance and then we can back to this.
Get back to this with our...
And maybe include that in the price yesterday morning.
Okay.
Okay.
Back to the boiler replacement.
Here, now you're on Ralph.
Okay. Well, it looks like, um, Bill Wilson said the chimney is not lined.
That was a big if. It's a pretty narrow little thing that's going up inside the wall, like, all the way to the top. It's steel on top and the bottom, but it's not lined and that should be the case.
I am not in favor of propane myself. He'll propose that. He would be in favor of propane, but...
Every engineer and Bill Wilson recommended going propane if we could.
Would he be able to service that? Because I, I know that's, like, just our own propane heater, I've always, I've had a hard time trying to get service on it.
Bill Wilson?
Yeah.
No, no, I, depends on who you hire.
Right.
But the engineer will get bids for you from contractors and then, and then if you make sure you get somebody who will service it.
Yeah.
And usually the people that you buy your propane from have their own service people that will service it.
Right, which is what I usually have the problem with.
Suburban?
No, uh, no, Haskins.
I have one question about propane. Is it, is the town able to get a corporate account for the cost of propane?
I, you have to negotiate a contract with somebody...
Yeah, the reason I ask is that I spoke with a person that I know who has, heats his house and he runs a business where he has a corporate account for propane, and he's currently paying a dollar eighty a gallon.
Well, the more propane you buy, the cheaper the price gets, I mean...
Yeah.
I have a gas stove and I pay, I think, four dollars a gallon.
Right.
Where I use a hundred gallons a year.
Yeah.
Somebody that's using two thousand gallons a year, they can get it under two dollars or whatever.
But if, I don't see fuel oil coming down into that price range. So, propane might work, if propane can work, you get a corporate account, that would additionally cut the price.
Really don't believe that we can put a tank outside the building.
You know, I'm not hiring a surveyor, I, I can't hire a surveyor, but talking to the neighbor, she thinks her property line is that Lila hedge out there. The tax map shows that there's twenty-five feet or so between the building and the property line. And it also says, it could be closer to that property line if the, if the other party can't build on that land, which they can't because they're right up within ten feet now. So, there's a reasonably good chance that you have room here to bury a, at least a five hundred gallon tank, maybe a thousand. And, um, I don't know what, it all seems to be rumors that, oh, we can't go any farther. Nobody can verify. To me, I have the deed, I have the tax map, I have her word. Erica, do you know what the zoning will allow if we put a tank on this side of the building?
Um, I can tell you the setback is ten feet from the property line, but, um, that's all I can tell you about propane in the sense of safety features and everything.
Right, well, that's, yeah, that's what I was asking.
But it's, it's...
Ten feet from the park.
It's ten feet setback from the property line, but also there's a certain, I believe there's a certain safety away from water lines.
Yeah.
So, that would, so have to be a consideration. If I may interject, I heat, I cook, um, and, uh, our hot water is propane and the furnace that we have is a Bosch, I'm not recommending anyone in particular, ninety-eight percent efficient. Uh, and my heating bill is lower than my mother's and I've got a bigger house. So, I would, propane really, if you get a good furnace, is much more efficient.
And it's less polluting.
Yeah.
And it, it direct vents to the outside. Yeah, I don't...
Fight wasn't a fight.
Again, I don't think that'll happen. Direct venting to the outside. Yes. Now because of the historical landmark. The building, again, we, we ran into problems trying to get a power line from a generator into the building. This goes right through the wall. This goes right through the wall and it may have to be six feet high or so from the grade. And it goes out and there's an exhaust and an intake. And that's, that's all you're going to see. You're not going to see a pipe running up the side of the building.
And we were talking to three inch pipe, you know, this wide, this tall off the ground, and they were hesitant on letting us do that. So, that's...
Well, I suppose. I mean, this is a historic building. We could line up 10 100 gallon tanks along the building here, which wouldn't look that good either. Because you can't go over 125 gallons with propane against the building. It has to be 10 feet away. So, I think it's a minor intrusion on, I've done a lot of historic buildings in Rutland and all over the places, an architect. I think it's a minor intrusion, probably something that has to happen. And we can try to put it in the best location so that it's not visible.
And you'd bury a tank legally?
I would bury the tank. You can bury a fiberglass tank with propane in it. It's not going to leak into the ground. You really should have a dam around all this. You've got 500 gallons of fuel oil in the basement. And if you spring a leak, it's not good. Propane will dissipate into the air.
You probably have to, if you had a leak out there, you'd have to evacuate the neighbors. Propane is heavier than air, so.
You know, you got...
I've heard that where NFPA regulations, they need to be so far away from the building and the neighbor, whether we can comply with that or not.
I thought I sent you that in this package, that it says you have to be 10 feet away from a neighboring property that's buildable. They don't have any buildable.
Well, they have an existing house there.
But it's 10 feet away from the property line. So, they can't come any closer. They can't put an addition on this side of the building. This is, some of the stuff is why we want to hire an engineer to make sure that everything is done appropriately. And I was asked to get three proposals from engineers. There aren't a lot of engineers around that are available. I suggest if you want to pursue this further, you talk, bring one of these engineers in, whichever you want, and talk to them. They're professionals. They're educated. They've got years and years of experience doing this. I'm not. That's why I always hired them.
People's thoughts. I mean, you spend $10,000 on an engineer, you can replace an oil oiler for that money.
Well, I'm concerned on spending that much on an engineer and...
I thought it was $4,000.
Well, there's...
A little bit.
That's a little bit.
Right. But even $4,000, my concern is, I've got nothing against engineers. I am what I preach, but... Why can't, as far as the placement of the tank, we're going to get the specs from the people that we signed a contract with for the propane. They're going to tell us where and when and how we can put that tank in the ground. So, that would save an engineer to reciting that. When it comes to doing the boiler, we know what size boiler we have now. It's a little undersized. I think you had stated or someone did in the past, but it's, but why not replace the boiler? I'm just, I'm thinking $4,000 could be better spent elsewhere than hiring an engineer to do something that our person that installs the furnace plumber, Bill Ocean or whoever that is, is going to know the specs, what this building needs. I mean, I did it with my house. I told, I told my plumber, I need a furnace. You tell me what I need. So, I'm just, you know, and the same thing with the tank. The propane company, whoever we signed a contract with, is going to tell us, you need a 1,000 gallon tank and it can be placed here. So, you know, just that's, I guess, my concern. The propane, I'm not against propane by any means. I'm a little concerned on trying to get access outside where it might be safer to send it right back up the chimney instead of doing a direct vent outside, but because you can vent with, I think you can vent with PVC on a direct vent furnace, am I right?
You can.
Okay. So, I'm just taking, sending it right back up, line the chimney with a PVC and send it right back up the chimney. If, I don't know if that's possible, but I'm just...
That's why I would hire a engineer.
But the plumber will know that also.
But you're going to have to get three bids. Now, you're going to have to give them some specs and things about what you want. You're going to have to list that out and what you expect, how it's going to perform, how the warranties are, what, all the details. You've got to connect to existing rusty old junk in the basement that's in bad shape. The piping, the circulator pumps, that needs to be replaced.
Right.
So, you write up a thing like that, hand it to three different plumbers in your business, I guess.
Would the plumbers be involved in letting us know what we need? Like, if things need to be replaced down there and we're going to propane, wouldn't they have an idea of the piping and all those intricacies?
Well, sure, but you have to, you have to tell them what you want. Some plumbers may see it differently. I don't know.
I think what we would do is tell them that we want the circulators replaced, the controls, had the boiler replaced. I mean, I just had a furnace replaced and basically we went from the ceiling in the basement down, everything new. The piping up to the radiators and that stuff all remained, but...
You can do that.
Everything was...
I'm not, I don't want to be a result of that. I've done what I think you asked us to do.
No, I do, I do agree that propane probably is the way to go. I'm, because it is cleaner. It is cheaper.
It sounds like everyone...
It's a higher BTU.
Looking at saying we should do propane.
Right, yeah. But it's, it's how do we get there? I mean, do we reach out to three plumbers and say, you know, like Bruce said, replace everything, boiler from the roof, from the ceiling down? You know, circulators, controllers, you know, the whole, everything. And what's the best options for venting?
And if they come back and say, oh, this is a little too complicated, then we think about an engineer or something else like that to figure that out. If that's what we want to move forward. But yeah, getting the bids, it makes, yeah, if we don't want to spend a four grand on that, then it makes more sense to try to get a little bit more down the road than versus just...
If we can start that process now, just, I would think, just reaching out to, because that's something, if we're going to go to oil or to propane, there's no switching out of boiler and just moving on. That's a complete switch and...
You can try to nurse this thing along until you get the new one installed.
Well, we may have, it may have to, that's...
You better think about this work.
We already signed a contract for oil for years, so I mean, you can't, you can't change horses now.
But it would be just, but are we worried that it's, so if we have it for the whole next year, then are we worried that the boiler will not last to the winter? Is that the problem? Because if we can, we know that it's going to last until our contract's up, we can then start the process of switching to propane.
We've been worried every year that that boiler is not going to last.
I wish you'd help.
I mean, the only problem is if it goes into winter, then we're putting, then we're staying with oil. That's...
Then you had to jam another replacement in there.
Right.
Go along with that. Or you don't want to have to hire an outside boiler to hit your building.
No.
That can be tough.
Like I said, if it goes over the winter, then we're, then we're staying with oil indefinitely. That kind of makes the decision for us.
But at the same time, having that knowledge that this is what the propane would cost or this is all being involved in it, having that knowledge so that we can make that final decision next year when our contract's up. So, we have the time to think about it, knowing that we're not doing it now, but knowing that when this comes around, we'll have to make a decision, boiler, propane.
Because we know it's going to go. And if it lasts the winter, then great, we'll change. Great. If not...
I mean, unless, unless the boiler, the cast of the boiler itself develops a leak, there's nothing down there that can't be replaced as a part.
Right, yeah.
The burner can be replaced, the burner liner can be replaced.
It's only a connection.
Circulator pump can, as long as the burner itself, we can get through the winter.
Okay.
Right.
Well, fine. Good luck.
Thank you, Ralph.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Did you thought to just wait to string the blow to bid on propane in the spring? Is that...
If you are the board, you'll saw, yes.
But I think we should start that bid process now or start looking at that now.
Start looking at bids now?
Well, I think, what are you thinking about? Develop a document for, that we can get to people and say, this is what we want to happen.
Right.
And then see what we get.
Right.
Would we qualify to come up with that bidding process?
I think I probably can.
Okay.
Probably before there's snow on the ground. So, if anybody's looked at anything, so if anything's out there, what they need to assess.
Yeah, they can either do it then or this fall, or they can do it in the spring.
Yeah, but I'm just thinking if...
You put any propane tanks in recently? Were they running? Not recently.
Well, I have, but I bought, the company has to buy it, whoever the gas company is.
Right, yeah, they provide it.
Right, to them.
Right. And they're going to tell you where, you know, where you could buy. I know we're looking at switching the house over to propane in there.
You're going to put it out here, don't you? It's also a historical site because there's going to be a great big dome sticking up in the middle of the yard.
She's got, I mean, metal, she's got a comment there from...
But she was saying above ground and brush around it.
Sure. I think that's okay. Like I said, we had an awful time trying to get a generator wired in, right.
I think we need a propane company to come in and look at where we're talking about putting it.
Yeah, yeah.
Get a y or a n.
Right. So, maybe that's even the first part of the process is before we spend the time on getting an RPL set up, say, let's call up Haskins or Hop or somebody and say, or Suburban and say, can you come down and just tell us the feasibility of this?
Yeah, we just changed, we just changed our, from two single tanks to a larger tank this summer. And they came, Irvin came and did an estimate last year to tell us roughly what we needed. We were already their customer though.
Yeah.
But they came and told us what their regulations were.
We just moved our propane to Irvin as well.
Yeah, I had Irvin buy, this, like, earlier summer, I had Irvin come down and tell me we've got to put in two tanks to do what we want. And they told me where they can put them, you know, and what I need to do to get it into the house and...
The other thing you should be aware of though is if you have a gas company put in their tank, you're stuck buying from them.
You're right.
Yes. That is, that is the yes, that is...
You're negotiating with anybody else on a better price or anything. It's...
That's true.
You're stuck with them.
That's the, that's...
Unless you pay for the tank.
Yeah, you can, you can pay for the tank too and then you have free.
That's true, yeah. Like if we paid them for it, but then that's another extra expense on... So, instead of renting it from them, but...
And there's other, and there's programs too you can go into to get...
If I can interject, if you buy your tank and you switch companies, your company has to certify the tanks. What we found out.
Yeah. Those fees with everything.
Okay. Incentive floodplain, floodway review and decision process. So, I think you all saw Shannon's letter.
Yes.
Mark and I sat down with Erica earlier in the week and talked through some of this stuff. I don't know how to approach this. Help me out, Mark.
I mean, from what I read, it seems like there's, there's two opinions on how this went down. And both of them have, whichever way has serious legal ramifications. So, talking to the lawyer about it where they can parse out if we did it right or we didn't do it right and do it that way.
I guess that's...
Is this about the review for the flood? The flood, no.
No.
I mean, Erica did everything that, she followed the rules that she was supposed to with the recommendation from the DRB to issue the permit. I don't know, as we said, I'm not sure what, if there's anything else that we can do, right? I mean...
As I explained to both of you, I issued the permit because it was, I was directed to issue the permit by the development review. I did not issue the permit on my own. I wouldn't even do that. And Dave Lou is on the DRB. I have the correspondence. I have the complete file, including the correspondence starting way back in February with this particular property owner telling him that it really wasn't a good idea to build what he wanted. And I instructed him to talk to Kyle Verdash, who is the floodplain manager, take a look at our hazardous floodplain, hazardous plan, flooding plan and everything. And, you know, basically I'm trying to tell him, don't do it. He insisted on it. He sent him an application and I am obligated. And I told him I would deny it. It would have to be referred to the DRB. He has worked with Kyle and Kyle, all the correspondence that I received from Kyle was also in the DRB packet. And Kyle said the only way that he could see this going through was, and he went through all the conditions and the like. And he said, if the town of Wallingford approves it, we still have to review it. And as far as I know, that's exactly what's happening. The DRB approved it. There was discussion. The minutes, it was reviewed by PEG TV. Minutes are there. The facts of findings are there. And I issued the permit, again, as I was directed to do so by the DRB. It's not on my own initiative. And if I could make a sub-comment about another permit that she also brought up. The permits in question were issued in 218 and 223 before I was at that desk. So, even the previous ones that she's alluding to with the Sparkle Lawn, I had nothing to do with.
Also, never went before the DRB on that 2018.
And the 2018, both of them. And I have copies of it. I made copies of them, if you'd like to see them. It did not go before the DRB. Previous zoning administrator approved it. But my way of working, especially if there's a question in the wetlands, is to call Kyle and ask him to take a look at what I sent him and what is... and ask him to take a look at what I sent him and what his thoughts. He has a person who's, he works with Sapata, and Sapata's very, very good. She's come out a few times and checked, and she said, yeah, it's fine. So if it's any question, I'm not going to say yes or no until I check with owner authorities.
So the state has it, while the state needs to, still needs to approve it?
Well, he has to review it, or he's reviewing it.
Review, right.
Okay. He got a copy of it, whether he's reviewing it or not, I can't tell you.
Right.
But, yeah.
But when we listened to the presentation, we reviewed the oil proposal for flood doors and everything. There is a house that's built over Bridgewater, adjacent to the river, with those same type of flood doors, and it withstood this last flood. The doors worked, washed through the basement, the building still was standing, with just minor damage, mostly debris that had to be picked up around the river.
And unfortunately, he's still got his cars on the road. I said unfortunately, he still has his cars on the road. He hasn't taken them back down in there yet. I think he's got chy.
No, he's, he's kept them up there until he gets done cleaning up, is what I understand. But I mean, we know that the doors worked as, as the proposal was presented to us.
He doesn't have a driveway permit. Is that, that not part of your process?
He talked, he said he talked to Mr. Baker about a driveway down there, and that was what we had heard that, and there was a, that was a previous house when I moved here. It was a house on that lot when I moved down.
Where are we talking here?
One Creek Road.
Just over the bridge?
Yeah, over Albert Jackson.
Just post...
Oh, we're over Jackson.
Right next to it.
Just past the bridge that you guys just fixed?
Yes.
There's a little 20-foot wide piece of land on the road, and then it kind of curves and...
Oh, yeah, we went down in, yeah, that's where we just did the bridgework.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. That was an existing driveway in there, as far as I was told. I don't know why anybody would be in there.
The dirt road right to the left after you got off the bridge?
That one comes back. There's a manhole right there.
A manhole right there.
Right there under that tree.
Down Maple Street.
Yep.
You're looking at the concrete bridge.
Yep.
Well, just go to the very right of it. There's a little 20-foot wide stretch of land that faces the road, and the rest of it all curves and back of the trees and the house that's out there.
Okay.
The property line goes down way along through those lilac bushes to the river, between Hammond-Jacksons. I went down and walked it with Albert, made sure where everything was.
Okay, I was, I don't remember, I locked it somewhere. I think the owner, Paige is the owner, isn't it?
Yeah. And there can be a feasible driveway there?
It's pre-existing.
Oh, if there are...
It was an entrance in there originally, as I know, remember. I, I didn't approve anything on it. I just said, you've got to make your decision, whatever the rest of the situation was. But it was pre-existing, so I presumed it.
You feel we need to...
I don't see any reason I get an attorney involved in it. I think we, it sounds like we've done everything, the town's done everything according to the rules. I don't know why we would, hate to be a, be a dead horse, but why we'd spend the money on an attorney? I'm not a money spender, sorry.
Is that the consensus of everybody, or...
I just, it just seems like there's a lot that's been...
Yes.
In the letter that's been brought up that say that there are these certain things. I don't know if you went to these in the meeting you had the last week, but just the idea of like these different things saying that there wasn't a certified registered professional engineer or architect, or that there wasn't...
Procedural things.
Yes, procedural things, and just making sure that we, that those, either those are not something that we have to worry about, or that is something we have to worry about. That's the thing that I'm concerned, is that if we go forward and approve this, and even if the state approves it, but something happens, like we're trying to, they try to participate in like a buyout program at some point because their property is thing, was flooded out, and then they find out they can't because of certain, they built on where they weren't supposed to be. That's, that's, that's what I, just especially with whatever we've been talking about tonight with the buyout program, if we're setting that up for success would be to make sure that this property, especially because it's going very close to the...
Yes.
That's what I would, that would be my feeling, of just being, due to the due diligence of spending the money for a smaller amount of money versus we get to a buyout and then somebody sues us because we didn't do everything right.
We need some due diligence.
Right. Because once it, once, once it starts, we start working on it and everything else, we won't have any recourse.
That's done, yeah.
We talked to the property owner, and he assured us that furnace and all of the electric and everything is going to be above flood level. It would be up on what would be the second floor of the building. Nothing would be down on that first floor where the water would travel through.
I just can't help but think about earlier in this meeting, how people in a house that we just approved for buyout had done a similar thing, made things up on the second floor, done all that, and then the river did what the river did. And I can stop thinking about that.
He's raising, he's not putting it on the second floor.
Right.
Well, let me rephrase that. It's going to be totally on the second floor, eight feet in the air. I don't, that river goes that high, we've got...
Actually, it's going to be more than eight feet because he's going to raise ground level a foot and a half, and then goes up at eight...
And then go up an extra eight feet to the...
Yeah.
So...
I mean, we go, we're going by the presentations and what he's agreed to do.
Yes, I, yeah, I totally hear that.
We're trying to do due diligence.
Yes.
For the town on it.
And what makes me kind of concerned is if Erica's already voiced concerns about giving the, I mean, other people have said, yeah, do it, but if we already have documented concerns that this is maybe questionable.
Oh, I voiced concerns because that's, that's part of my job is to say, are you...
It is.
And again, one of the things he did say at the meeting was there would be no electrical wiring in the basement. So everything would be at least 10 feet, 15 feet high, so on and so forth. One of the things with Mr. Page, actually starting from almost day one, was the fact that he wanted assurances if he spent the money, he had to do a hydrostat test, a hydrostatic test, water test and everything, and before he spent the money, he wanted to be sure that he would have the approved permit. Nothing is...
Right.
As it turns out, there's already a water hookup and sewer hookup on that property. So, yes, because the previous, I would assume because of the previous assessment, and he received permission from the fire district. He was told, yes, you can do a hookup. But the whole point that I'm trying to say is, before he would do anything, he wanted assurances that everything would be approved, and I don't give assurances. I don't...
Yeah, no, I'm just saying if we are, and Philly even made a comment about, I don't know why anybody would want to build there. That's kind of...
Yes.
Just for a start, why is the house not there now, that was previously there?
Guy died that had the previous house on that parcel.
What happened with the structure?
Back in the 70s.
So it's been vacant for that time? It's been completely vacant, like there's nothing that...
So there's, there's a structure there now?
No.
What happened to the structure?
The structure was removed after the guy was deceased.
Okay.
But it wasn't due to...
I'm going by Albert Jackson living next door.
Right.
Said when he moved in, the house was there, and the guy was living in it, and when he died, his kids didn't think it was, or relatives didn't think it was worth anything, so they took it down, the structure down. It's all I know.
The issue for us really isn't...
No, I know. I'm just, that was gorgeous.
It's whether or not things were legally followed. That's the issue for us.
Yeah, that is the question.
But part of what I'm hearing, though, is a lot of, this is the way it was and heard, and that's just, it was their proper documentation, everything done. That's just my concern is, just because there was water hookup and because there was a road, does it follow our regulations of now? Was that covered? Because there was a lot of, oh, it was there, so it should be good. That's just where I was going, Bruce, just not that it was actually checked into or anything. It was just, it was there. And I mean, I've seen some houses, it was there, and you don't...
Actually, he did, he is working, he is working with an individual who is supposed to be a civil engineer, and Shannon is saying that the individual isn't. I have it in the documentation. I mean, he did a report, and reports about 30 some odd pages. So there was a report.
Okay.
But the claim in the letter says it wasn't done by a certified civil engineer.
And this is just, you know?
Yeah.
But that's not really required, is it, for a permit in the town of Wallingford?
No. And what about the stuff of the industrial zone, in the 20-foot versus 50-foot?
It's an existing lot, and this is part of the problem. And yes, it is in the industrial zone. And Shannon has repeatedly said that she, why is everything in the industrial zone? They should be residential. And my comment is because it is the industrial zone. The planning commission, going on three years now, over three years ago, asked any residents in any of the zones if they wanted to be rezoned, to please notify the planning commission per approval of the select board. And it was put in the monthly newsletter in August and September, and I believe October. It was published on front porch four. There was an other note put in, and then one person came forward on any of the...
If you look historically, Justin, there were industry in all of these zones.
For sure, yeah, remember.
At one time or another.
Yeah, being on the planning commission, that, that whole rigmarole is insane, just like how everything's decided. But, but it's just in terms of if there is a, but you're saying because it's a existing lot, then that regulation doesn't matter if it was, if it was being subdivided or changed?
Well, you can't, you can't subdivide it. I mean, if you have a lot, you can't subdivide it less than it is. But he's not subdividing it. It's, it's there. And it's on the tax map. It's already plotted out, so...
Do we want to take any action, or do we want to just move on?
I mean, it sounds like quite a lot of the board has concerns about whether we did it. I mean, we can send it off to the attorney, just send him this in the documentation that we have, and say, what did we do? You know, make, or did we do it right? Let him, let him make the determination, because if we didn't, he's the one that's going to be representing us.
Right. Give him a heads up, basically. I, I, I don't like throwing money at it, but it just, it feels like there's, it just feels like it would be worth it to spend the money now versus later. That's my feeling.
If I can interject, the permit was issued on the 7th of August. If you're going to do anything like that, it's, you have to notify him by the 7th of September. But because that, our zoning and the state, the neighbors and butters, anyone has 15 days' notice normally on a DRB reading, they've got 30 days to issue a, don't even think about building. But that's generally speaking, an environmental court issue, not this. So I don't, I don't know the legality of, if you send it to the lawyer and the lawyer says, no, it was done right, it would be past the 7th.
Right. But we're still, he's still pending the state, though, correct? Maybe?
Maybe.
We don't know, we don't know if it's...
We don't know when the state has the 7th. I mean, the state can come back, but even the state then, my understanding would be, as Kyle said, you know, he would review it. If there's a question, but it's after the 7th, it's done, it's...
Right.
You know, he can, he can break ground, if you will, on the 8th of September, technically.
That's what I say about that.
Well, if the attorney reviews it and finds there's errors, I mean, it can at least be a learning experience.
For sure, yeah. If we're, if we're thinking about it as like we want to be, to have, to better inform our different committees in town so that they know that these are actually the things that we need to look for, then that's worth it, if we can. It doesn't, doesn't seem that it's going to really affect right now.
I don't know if my experience is helpful, but one of the reasons I've never filed an insurance claim on my property in spite of all the water, and the water, at this time, went almost to the first floor, is that I have my power box on the first floor.
Yeah.
And not in the cellar. I don't have my telephone stuff in the cellar. I have as much stuff that's out there on the water, and as soon as the water goes up, it's exactly the same way. And, you know, it used to be a soda biker buggy shop, and it's an old, old place, and so far, it's lived. And I have had, I almost hate to tell you how little damage I've ever had. The first flood destroyed a dug well that was in my cellar. For some reason, it got kerosene, and somebody from the state came through, and apparently I wasn't the only one, and so it was dug, they drilled a well. That is the only claim I've ever had since 1971, which is lovely. But I think that one of the things that as we go through with this, I want, this is my fifth time in cellar, almost on the first floor, is that we're going to have to think differently. We're going to have to construct differently. We're just going to have to do things differently to protect that. And I think we're just learning about how to do that.
Yeah.
Paul Vilar, who was from Europe, and my father after the 73 flood, when my dad came, and Mr. Vilar came down from his IO over there, they worked out some of the stuff that I should be doing. And I did it, and knock on wood, it worked. But I do think we need to just be very aware that some of the what we've been doing is going to need to change.
So, so I think in that...
It comes back to...
Yeah.
To ask the attorney to look at this or not?
I, I will make a motion that we have the attorney look at this to make sure that either we've done everything right, or if there is some things that we need to change in future policy, that we can do that, just to better inform us going forward in this new state where we're having more of these flooding issues.
And I presume all of this information, this, these complaints are coming from a citizen of the town of Wallingford?
Yes, yes.
This is not a joining property owner who would have the biggest concern to...
Correct.
This is just a person that lives, that lives in town.
Yes.
Second?
Second.
Falls in favor?
Aye.
Post?
I'll say aye.
It's 4-1.
It's 5. What exactly do you want me to give to Gary?
The, the...
The letter?
The letter from Shannon and then the...
File, the whole file?
Yes, the copy of the file.
Yep. And do we have to get a letter out to the property owner that you're not trying to stop moving the building?
No.
So...
Okay.
Personally, I don't think so.
Okay.
But I'm not...
Maybe explain to him there is some urgency on his review because in two days...
Well, technically tomorrow. On the 6th? Oh, sorry, 7th. Apologize.
On the 7th of the...
God, it's September.
Building permit is a va, is a valid, done deal.
My brain is...
Yes, there's some unfortunate circumstances.
Okay. Now, even, even after the 7th, the state can still, they can't stop that either? Okay.
No, and not unless, I mean, again, one of the conditions was that all required permits are obtained.
Right.
So somebody could say, well, a state permit is not necessary. It's just a nice rubber stamp. It's, it's a good stamp.
Okay.
If there's any problems.
Okay.
Kyle said he would review it. Whether he has or not, I can't tell you. I don't know. If it's, I would assume if there was a big problem with it and he reviewed it, we would have heard about it.
Okay.
Because he was, seriously, when he was working with Mr. Page, before it went before the DRB, Kyle was very good about replying to Mr. Page and CCMA, asked what was going on. And all of that correspondence is included in, in the file, and it was included with the DRB packet.
Can you make that packet available to me in the morning so I can get it out to you?
It's on the side table, it says T. Page. I already got it out working.
So until this morning?
I mean, if the DRB followed the rules, you know, the way they're supposed to, the zoning administrator did the way that, you know, they're supposed to, then it's not much, it's fine. It's not much the town can do, you know, or anybody can do.
No, for sure. And that's, that's what, I'd rather that, know that, or know that we need to change it going forward so that we don't get into this situation again.
Even if it's just a proper documentation and...
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Which seems to be my, some of the...
Yeah.
Thank you for your...
Thank you.
Assistance.
Thank you.
Welcome. Officer appointment. So Kathy had asked, or Carolyn, I mean, had asked at the last meeting if we could advertise, if anybody else was...
Yeah, because of the form on the website, newsletter.
Just, I mean, if she wasn't really going home for it, you know what?
Yeah.
Appreciate that she's willing to do it, just...
Right.
Yeah.
Just make sure. Don't want her to feel stuck with it.
Right, right.
And then not be able to really solve it for...
Yeah.
Yeah.
So do, we want to recommend Trish?
Sure.
Consensus?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Relling County Sheriff July Activity Log. Okay, I asked for this to be on the...
Sure.
Where did it go?
Very near the, uh, page 39.
I don't know if anybody else picked up on this, but there were a few things in this log that really concerned me and made me wonder whether, what are we paying for?
Okay.
If you look at like, and some of them may be justified, but some of them I question. Like on number 51695, I mean, she, we're billed an hour at the sheriff's station reviewing cases and paperwork. That wasn't really the one that got me going. If you look on the second page of this, 51477, we got billed an hour of the sheriff's time to go to a vigil. I don't think we should be being billed for things like that. She billed, we got billed for an hour for her to have her dinner at the sheriff's office.
Right, it was one, one thing if like the dinner was here...
Yeah, like she was having it in her cruiser, yeah.
Before, when the sheriff was here discussing paperwork and stuff, but at least the car was present.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm with you.
And the one above that, I mean, there's, she took an hour break at the sheriff's station because her back was, back pain. Why are we getting billed for that?
Where is that, the back pain?
Uh, 51479.
And there's another one in here where she went to supper and spent three hours with the state police on a federal case. I mean...
So the, the way that...
Another one where at the end of the shift, we got billed for an hour for paperwork and the stop for gas in West Relling. That's not, that's not patrolling in the town of Wallingford.
Right.
I mean, Sheriff Fox discussed they had to do paperwork, which is understandable for stuff. It was supposed to be in a visible...
Right. Because we talked about that specifically, so...
So the cop, the car itself could help be a deterrent.
Right.
And be here for response.
And the other thing, if you look at this, nowhere is she ever in East Wallingford. Nowhere is she ever in South Wallingford. I mean, we've asked before that they patrol the entire town, not just the village here, so...
There's need.
Yeah.
So what would be a course of action here?
Well, I think we should ask the sheriff to come in and discuss some of this stuff with us. We can let him know our, the concerns we have. I mean, I, I'll admit, I hadn't really paid close attention to these every time they came in, other than to look at what they had written for tickets and sputter...
Tickets and things, yes.
Sputter about the lack of them. But this one, when I happened to see that she, we got billed for an hour for her to go to a vigil, it just, then I started looking a lot closer, and the more I looked, the more annoyed I got.
Yes, I guess it also, I wonder in the contract itself, does it have anything where things have to be, we're only getting billed for things that are happening inside of town limit?
Well, we can't do that because a lot of times if they're working on a case, they're going to work on it back at the station, not here in town.
What case for...
Something in, something in...
Right. That, that makes sense, but if they're working on something or they're out at another place.
Right.
The contract is not for just a certain proportion of an hour.
Entire town.
Right.
Border to border.
Yeah.
You know, the contract, I've looked the contract back over, and it doesn't really state a whole lot of specifics on stuff.
It's a good contract.
Other than they'll provide 20 out for hours.
They will bill us for somebody else.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I just, if the rest of the board agrees, I mean, I'd like to see any to ask David to be at...
I think so.
Just to...
Yeah.
Share some concerns.
Right, because they know how much they go over the stuff to see.
And if they want a good, like, chunk of time to work on report, go up on 140, like, east or west, and just hang out, you'll get a couple of tickets, but you'll have a nice quiet night to do some work, like...
I mean...
But at least it's, there's a presence there, there's, yeah.
I'd like to discuss the fact that they're always sitting at the fire station. I get more complaints from townspeople about that.
Yes.
I mean, what are they going to do there?
Or the rescue.
I haven't had, I haven't heard that one, Phil, but...
Constantly sitting there.
I know, I get constant complaints about them sitting at the fire station. Last week, I'm out for a bike ride, and there they are sitting at the fire station.
He sat there over an hour today. Rescue, probably because he gets Wi-Fi or something, I don't know.
No.
We can give them the passwords and the library Wi-Fi if we really need to. They can sit up right there.
Right.
Right. If that's what they're concerned about.
Okay. What assistance program request letter? I remember what that one was about.
Is this what the gentleman was talking about? He was saying that there was money available?
No, this might be, this might possibly help us for flood wall the lane maybe?
Okay.
You do the request letter, it doesn't obligate you to anything, it just kind of puts us in line.
Okay.
Link coming. Start the process without an obligation, we need to see what's involved and how they could or cannot help, so...
Got to see any started by consensus here?
Well, it looks like you finished it, didn't you, Sammy?
I, yeah.
Yeah.
Just gave, yeah, consensus and then...
And then Bruce's line.
Oh, great, yes. That's great. Okay.
Erosion reduction design schedule. So Evan Fitzgerald has got back to us and stated, we will be delivering a preliminary design by Friday, the September 8th. And he has a suggested schedule for the completion of the work. So on the 8th, he'll give us a 60% preliminary design and cost opinion to the town. By the 25th, can provide in back comments. Then during the month of October, they'll finalize, they'll finalize the design, secure the permits that they need. Any comments on that? Everybody go with that?
Yeah.
Sounds great.
Select board comments or concerns? Other business.
So we're going to have really smooth roads here in about a week?
Depends on cat. They deliver.
Just picking them.
So Fire District 1 will be holding a special meeting on Wednesday, September 27th at the town hall, 7 o'clock. Ask district voters to approve $119,785 for the purchase of air packs to be financed over five years.
So apparently that was already approved, but the bank wants additional, they want an Australian, from what I was told today, they want an Australian ballot to show proof of the vote.
Oh.
And it's only for you three folks. We don't count. We're just here, we just go along with the flow. You don't even go along with the flow. You don't count in at all.
Nope, it's not my district.
Bill Osten has said the wilder table is too high to do the water installation at the ball field right now. Feels like they need to wait till end of September, October. I really feel that if that's the case, we ought to wait till spring to do this, because to me, there's no sense in paying him to put in a meter and then turn around...
And shut it off in a month and a half?
Shut it off.
And there's nothing going on in September, is there? Other than flag football?
Flag football. And they're going to bring in their own water anyways?
Just the one thing at the end of September.
That's just my suggestion.
And there's no financial loss? We don't have to use money?
No.
No.
Just come spring, we do it, and that way, be one less time you have to pay for the meter to...
Okay. I don't think we should be paying for a meter that we're not going to use. Okay.
Hey, Phil, when you come down to Moe, put your flotation tires on.
Oh, select board concerns, I'm sorry, I just, I just had one, I just thought of the, I was at the park yesterday, and the trash can was overfilled. I don't know if that was from the fireworks or something else, but...
Yes, that was from the fireworks.
But it was like, there was, there was like a table there, there was a ton of stuff.
Did you say a table?
A table. A broken table.
Oh, that's, did you hear these words?
The, the cameras are up now, right? So we should have some...
Yeah, so maybe we should check it.
Yeah, that sounds like somebody dumping their trash.
Yeah. Just, but, but just that, that, I just, I forgot about that, and I wanted to make sure.
And just to let you all know, Lisa Williams contacted me, the climbing wall down at the rec park seems to have cracked footholds. I did bring that up to Shannon.
Okay.
And so she is aware, and hopefully is going to check it out. Some of the footholds are broken. Her youngest son got thrown off of this, the structure because some of the footholds were broken, and Lisa noticed that a bunch of them were cracked.
Cool.
So we had Wallingford Day fireworks this past weekend. I heard lots of booming.
It was actually a good show.
It was a really good show. Someone timed it and told me it was 22 minutes long.
That's pretty good for...
Yes, yes, but enough money.
I was impressed, there was a lot of people down there.
There were a lot of people, and with, Michael and I were commenting on, it's one of the nicest shows we think we've seen down there.
And actually, people commented they liked that it was Labor Day weekend. It was the nicest weather we've ever had, too.
Although, it seemed to be that it was about terrain right before the fireworks fell.
I know, it got a few drops.
That's true, it was like, hurry them up.
Got a few drops down there, it's like...
And there's supposed to be no rain at all.
I mean, we have the record heat now, but we didn't have the record heat of past years, with the smog and the rain like this year, and...
Just enough, just enough rain to bring out the bugs.
Yeah.
And I think that's pretty much it for...
I'll make a motion. Do a turn.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.